They're inexperienced, they're young, I think they're having fun, but it could lead to dangerous, even deadly consequences.
And just to let you know, we're getting complaints from the neighbors that there possibly is underage drinking going on here.
The Garden Grove City Council passed a social host ordinance last June of 2013. This law prohibits adults from hosting or allowing drinking parties for minors on their property, and those that do allow this...
They will be responsible for that event, and they will also be cited with a $1,000 citation.
It shouldn't be done, and so this ordinance is...
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting of June 24th, 2014. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Phan?
Here.
And Chair Beard?
Here. First item would be oral communications relating to the Housing Authority. Is there any cards, any public comments on the Housing Authority?
I'd like to speak on the Housing Authority. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Josh McIntosh, 10832 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove, California. And on the subject of the Housing Authority, you know, a few months, or I'm not sure how long ago, we gave the Housing Authority land, what we call the West Parking Lot on Garden Grove Main Street. It had been an issue, and I just don't want it to go away. I want to bring this up to the Housing Authority again, that residents are concerned that with that parking lot being turned over to the Housing Authority, Housing Authority is primarily Section 8 housing for low-income families, and I want you guys to consider, do we really want, with the reimagine of Garden Grove, to fill up our parking lot with Section 8 housing? Does that fit for the new model for downtown? I don't think so. I'd like the Housing Authority to consider doing something else with that property, other than being turned into housing, and restore it to the former parking district that we once had, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Seeing none, we'll move to item two, the consent items. Anyone wish to pull an item? Entertained a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Excuse me, Chair Beard, I have to take an oral vote tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
That's okay.
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Aye, too.
Yes.
Chair Beard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ayes have it? Okay.
Yes.
Item number four, oh, excuse me, item number three, public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you have a public hearing to consider the budget for the Housing Authority, and Nadal Watkins is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, and disabled persons in payment of rent on privately-owned rental units. The Garden Grove Housing Authority subsidizes over 2,300 families and administers additional 300 families for incoming portability. Incoming portability refers to participants from housing authorities in other jurisdictions who moved into Garden Grove, and administrative fee is paid to the Garden Grove Housing Authority for administering these families. All Section 8 rental units are inspected before admission, and annually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff inspects approximately 3,700 rental units. We also administer the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This program is for current Section 8 participants, and is designed to encourage tenant participation in education and career development. In addition, the Housing Authority has assets from the former Garden Grove agency. These assets include land purchased with housing set-aside funds, several homes in the Civic Center area which are being rented to low- and moderate-income households, and several affordable housing agreements. The rentals and affordable housing agreements generate a small amount of revenue which is used for the maintenance and upkeep of those homes, and for the operational costs of administering these assets. That concludes my report. Mr. Oke, Ricky will provide additional information.
Thank you, Nadia. We do have a balanced budget for the Housing Authority. The budget as proposed is balanced and provides necessary funding to run the entire housing program. For the fiscal year, it is estimated that the Housing Authority will receive approximately $31.9 million in total. About $31.6 million goes to run the housing, and approximately $3.6 million of that goes to the half-portability, and approximately $111,000 for the family sufficiency program. And as pointed out earlier, in addition, the Authority has responsibility for managing the Civic Center properties and low-moder program. Approximately $90,000 is included in the budget for this purpose. And this concludes my report, and staff here can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on the Housing Authority. Anyone wish to speak?
Yes, I'm wondering what the Civic Center Property Management, item 2535 to the tune of $90,000, what exactly are we managing at the Civic Center Property Management?
We are managing the properties that the former redevelopment agency purchased in the Civic Center. There's about 14 residential properties, most of which are occupied by low- and moderate-income households, so we are monitoring them and making sure they can remain safe and sanitary.
Okay, and these are primarily near the high school over here, is that right, between, say, Ninth Street and...
Ninth Street and Civic Center Drive, and Acacia and Garden Grove Boulevard are the borders.
Is there a long-term goal for these homes? Will they remain there, or are they slated for demolition in the next 10 years?
Josh, excuse me, we're taking in public testimony, this is a public hearing, so it's not a direct question of staff, so...
I apologize.
No, no, no need for apologies, I just want to say, you should direct your questions to the Housing, to the Authority, and then we can direct any questions.
Okay, all apologies. So what is our long-term goal for these properties, these former redevelopment properties? Are we going to keep them, or are we going to be bulldozing them and making them condos, or what's the plan?
Okay. And that's the comment you wish to make?
The first.
Okay. Any other comments, or?
We'll see how the answer goes.
Okay. Is that it?
The answer is that we, you're here to make comments, and it's not a debating thing.
It's something you're discussing, you can't, we're not here to be drilled or anything
like that.
Okay.
We've already asked four or five questions that would never...
Okay. I'd like to just phrase this as a question, then, for the Housing Authority. What is our long-term goal for these properties?
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any other members of the public wishing to speak on the, as a public hearing item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Housing Authority. Inquiries, we had a question, anyone quit, staff wish to address that question, long-term use of the properties?
I think with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, some of the thoughts as to what may occur in the Civic Center will have to be evaluated as we go forward. So at this time, we don't have any immediate plans, nor do we have a...
So it's a policy decision to be made in the future?
Yeah, to be evaluated later.
With public input at those appropriate times?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, the public hearings close, no further comments or questions? Entertained a motion?
Move the item.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like, would you like me to take a roll call vote? Maybe that might be easier.
Okay, please do.
Commissioner Beckles?
Aye.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Aye.
Commissioner Phan?
Aye.
Chair Beard?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, item number four, matters from the chair, I have nothing, Commissioners, Director? Seeing none, we can move to adjournment four. We are, our next meeting for July 22nd is canceled, and we will, our next meeting will be August 26th, 2014. We rejoin. So it's a policy decision to be made in the future?
Yeah, to be evaluated later.
With public input at those appropriate times?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, the public hearings close, no further comments or questions? Entertained a motion?
Move the item.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like, would you like me to take a roll call vote? Maybe that might be easier.
Okay, please do.
Commissioner Beckles?
Aye.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Aye.
Commissioner Phan?
Aye.
Chair Beard?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, item number four, matters from the chair, I have nothing, Commissioners, Director? Seeing none, we can move to adjournment four. We are, our next meeting for July 22nd is canceled, and we will, our next meeting will be August 26th, 2014. We rejoin. It's the next one.
At this time, we'll all gather the Garden Grove City Council. Ms. Broadwater, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Phan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Broadwater?
Here. Okay.
Invocation, Mayor.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm not seeing what it's supposed to be there. Okay, we'll go with invocation.
Dear Lord, we ask for your presence over this council meeting. We ask that you bestow your blessings and wisdom to everyone present here, and may your hand guide the discussions and the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of all in our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Amen.
Gina, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please face our flag and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the presentations, I would like to say that we had a closed session. We talked with two of the associations that we have with the city, and there's nothing here to reply to. So we do have presentations, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Oke, Ricky to make the presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fatale. The Garden Grove City Council is proud to shine the community spotlight on two special individuals who have enhanced the Garden Grove community with their time, generosity, and spirit of service. They are the 2014 Strawberry Ball King and Queen, also recognized as the Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year. Would Richard Dickey and Ellen McNamara please come forward? Richard is not, is a... be driving at ninety-six years old. The City of Gadding Grove thanks you, Richard Dickey and Ellen McNamara, for your exceptional service to the city and the community of Gadding Grove. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Richard and Ellen with their gift of appreciation and recognition for their influential role in their clubs and the community. Thank you.
Please come forward. Ellen, we have a little plaque here for you.
My goodness.
Richard, we have one for you also. They're trying to take my license when I'm only seventy-five, it doesn't seem quite fair.
I was hoping they'd leave that on. Nobody wants to drive to Gadding Grove.
Chris, thank you, I appreciate it.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Ellen. Hey, if you could kind of scoot a little bit this way. There we go, perfect. Okay, ready? And then I'm going to take one more. Good.
We're understanding we have another presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Okeiriki will make this presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fatale. Tonight, again, the Gadding Grove City Council is pleased to recognize five of Gadding Grove's best and brightest who have earned the distinguished Youth of the Year Award for two thousand fourteen from the Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove. Since nineteen forty-seven, the Boys and Girls Club of America have recognized members of their, members for their outstanding service to the club, the community, and their academic success. This year's Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove's two thousand fourteen Youth of the Year recipients are Lacy Claire, Leanne Habiel, Alexis Medina, and Mia Shimizu and Catherine Tran. Will all five honorees please come forward? Lacy is a student at Edgar Branch and a two-year member of the club. Her favorite club activity is the game room because it's a great way to socialize and bond with friends. In the future, Lacy hopes to major in American Indian History at San Diego State University or Cal State Long Beach to pursue a career in teaching. Leanne Habiel is a student at the Men Branch and a two-year member of the club as well. When asked how the club will help her succeed, she said, quote, "Everyone is supportive, they don't make me feel bad when I make a mistake, the club has helped me through a lot." Alexis Medina is a student at the Santiago High School Branch and a dedicated six-year member. From beautifying the neighborhoods, parks, and beaches to feeding, clothing, and empowering the homeless and financially struggling families in the community, Alexis has worked hard to contribute and make a difference in the lives of others. Mia Shimizu, a two-year member from the Rawston Intermediate Branch. Mia's favorite club activity is anything that involves music because she gets to see different styles from her peers. When asked why she likes music, she said, quote, "When she, when it, when it comes to music, not everyone is the same. Music activities encourage us to bring out our individuality. In the future, Mia hopes to inspire others through music." Kathy Tran is a student at the Alamitos Intermediate Branch and a four-year member at the club. Last December, she had forty blankets with her school's National Junior Society as Christmas gifts to children in the shelter. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these amazing kids with their gift in appreciation and recognition of their influential roles to their boys and girls clubs. Congratulations.
Which one's Lacy? Why don't you turn around and let the photographers take a shot for you?
Okay, on the count of three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
And if I can make one point of correction with the last statement, it's not kids, it's actually young ladies.
Okay, we'll go to oral communication. We'll go to oral communications at this time and I'd like to have the sanitary district and the successor district, successor agency at the same time to be open for oral communication. David Chover. Is David here? Oh, there he is, back there.
Mayor, would you prefer that I wait till the item come up or speak now, sir?
Well, we're having oral communications now, Dave.
You, you talk off, it's item ten A, the Carmel Lamson Annex.
Well, we don't do it really that way, you can just come and speak on it now.
Whatever you push.
I prefer you to come now, talk to me. I got a feeling I'm going to take some heat, so I might as well get it over with.
Actually, you're not. Just I love you.
You know, I always consider this my sister city, so that will never separate me, trust me. Anyway, the reason I'm here this evening is I wanted to kind of show the position of the City of Stanton on the Carmel annexation. You know, there's been a lot of things said and a lot of rumors going around and I want to clarify a few points with the council because I think it's an important decision that you folks are going to be making tonight. In September of two thousand and eleven, the best practices of LAFCO substantiated that the best place for the Carmel Lamson annexation was the City of Stanton. It was a project of about twenty units, multi-family, about seventy-five residents, and it just happened to fit right in the pocket of Smoke Tree, which is one of our, our small gated, semi-gated residential communities. So it was a perfect fit. It was actually within the design of the whole complex. At that point, LAFCO was pretty insistent that we helped them because they wanted to get rid of, like you guys all know, to get rid of some of their county properties. So we went ahead and we spent about six or seven months of my staff time in working and doing, going through the process. We worked hand-in-hand with LAFCO. We went through the best practices, we found out that what was best, you know, for everybody. They were very insistent on us taking this property. So a majority of the council, except for the ones that lived in an adjacent area, voted to accept LAFCO's position on this. We even had to go through the process of zone changing because it was condominium complexes that were there and we had to make it multi-family. So we accommodated that and we had to go through that whole hearing, the SEQA, you know, you know all that. And it's a lot of time and a lot of money for the city. And then we sent it back to LAFCO for final approval and we figured that, you know, that's a done deal, we did what they asked us to do, we got beat up a little bit and, you know, we were pretty happy about it. And then all of a sudden, it was my understanding that a phone call came down from Congressman Campbell's office to LAFCO. And then all of a sudden, everything seemed to unwind at that point, okay? I'm not sure what transpired with that, you know, there's always rumors and I'm not one that's going to go out and, and point the finger at anybody, but one of the things that concerned me was that the property manager or the owner of that property's spouse, I believe, was the direct district director for Congressman Campbell. I'm not saying anything was done wrong, but, or whether it was some undue influence, but I just, it was hard for me to understand why the whole thing unwound, anyway. As we go back through it, as I look at, at the reasoning behind it, I was concerned because the city did what we were supposed to do. We did what was asked of LAFCO, we went through the process, it was a two-year process, and here we are almost three years later and they're banging on your door to come your way. There were some disparaging things in the newspaper, okay, but I always figure you guys are my sister city and, and I'm not going to get into that, that's not important to me. I did want to say that we do have higher, our lower crime rates in the last couple of years than anybody else in the county, especially with our major crimes. We're very proud of Stanton. And we would only have generated out of that two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars in tax money for the city general fund, which really isn't too much. I would be concerned if I was a resident there because they're going to be reevaluated by the county assessor and, you know, your property values are higher than Stanton's, I'll give you that. And so they're going to be paying a lot more taxes for that. We don't have any high schools, so there's going to be bond measure, things that you're going to be paying. And I, I think your TOT is a little bit different than ours. But you know what, I'm not going to get into that because I said, you guys are my neighbors, I respect you all, and I love this city, I had a great relationship, you know, I've been in office for twenty-five years. But it was important enough for me to miss my council meeting to come down here tonight to talk to you while my other four colleagues are solving the problems in Stanton. The only thing I'm going to leave with you is are you creating a window for other people that decide that they just want to go wherever they want to go? Are you setting a precedence by taking somebody that's not in your sphere of influence? I mean, I would like to take my city and say, okay, LAFCO, let me go to Beverly Hills and then maybe my property values would go up. But, you know, being on a serious note, I, I just hope that you take that into consideration. You know, this came back to us and we were a little insulted with LAFCO. It took us about a year to get over our relationship with LAFCO because of what they did. You know, they come out and make you do everything that you have to do the right way, spend all your money, and then they treat you like that. And I'm not sure what the undue influence is and I'm concerned about that, but I just wanted to come here tonight to tell you that Stanton is a wonderful community, Garden Grove is a wonderful community. You guys are my neighbors, you've always been for twenty-five years, Bruce, you've been one of my best friends, and I want you guys to know that we'll always have a great relationship with you no matter what happens. But I had to be here this evening, so thank you very much for your time and I appreciate that a lot.
Stand, David. It was my impression that the Stan, the City of Stanton had looked at this situation, and when I say the City of Stanton, I'm talking about the council, and had looked at the situation and said they didn't care one way or the other. Now, maybe that's not true, maybe that's, you know.
On March twenty-fourth of two thousand and twelve, the City Council threw a resolution two thousand and twelve-eleven requesting the annexation of Carmel Lamson Island, approving the property tax share agreement, and it was voted four oh, with one abstaining because that person happened to live in.
When change come around, when they, when Campbell or whoever was interfering or what they were doing, did that come before the council again?
I beg your pardon?
Did, did this situation come before the council again?
The only thing that the, the pressure that we, the only pressure we got was in the month of December, LAFCO came back and asked us to unwind the, the agreement for annexation.
And did you?
Yes, we did.
What did you do then?
We did that because, number one, LAFCO was putting pressure on us to do it and we were really disdained at that time and we were really upset with them and we didn't want to have anything more to do with LAFCO. In fact, we were thinking about what we could do to sever our ties with them, of course you can't do that. You know, it was more of a.
Well, my point is this, I wish you guys would have come here last week and spoke up. You had, I don't know who the guy was that came, but he was not your best representative.
Yeah, well, you know, it's kind of funny, you know what the bottom line here is from what they told us? We want to go to Garden Grove and get out of Stanton because we can't get the rents, we can't get the rents that we rent our, our dwellings for in Stanton, we can get much more for them in Garden Grove. And you know what's really silly about the whole thing? They have a Garden Grove mailing address, so the seventy-five people that live in that complex don't even know that they don't live in Garden Grove and they actually live in Stanton. That's how silly the whole thing was. But anyway, I, you know, my council wasn't real happy about some of the disparaging comments and I, I told them that, you know, that sometimes things like that happen, but if you really think about it, our taxes are relatively low in our city and we use all of our utility tax for just police and fire, we don't use them for anything else. You guys do the same thing, you know, whenever you, we can get an extra buck or so.
Not us.
No, you don't have utility tax.
Not us.
No, but I'm just saying.
I'm just saying we don't do that.
Yeah, well, of course, you didn't lose your entire city to redevelopment either. Anyway, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks for coming, Dave.
Good evening again, council, I'm going for a record tonight. I wanted to ask you to lend your influence over a couple city departments tonight. First of all, a sad thing happened on Stanford Avenue recently. It was discovered that a, an old, what we'll call a historic tree, a multi-generational tree, it's even older than you, Bruce, has gotten a, what's called a root disease and unfortunately, it seems it's going to have to be taken down. That tree is near Saint Columbas Church and it's a California pepper tree, it's been there for nearly one hundred years, although it hasn't been dated, the size of it would lead us to believe about that era. Well, Public Works is going to be taking that tree down, most likely. I understand there's an injunction against it by the property owner, but chances are he's not going to, only, he'll just stretch that out. So anyways, I talked to Public Works and they stated that the wood would all go to this landscaping company that tears it out. I would like to have X amount, very small portion, maybe a large branch, saved to give to a local Garden Grove woodworker. He's a retired gentleman that lives off Paloma Street and he makes these great walking sticks. He actually carves in important dates and things in your life into them. And, you know, he's a retired guy, he's in his garage whittling away all day. I think that.
Josh, you can have the whole tree.
Tell Public Works. Anyways, I'd like to get this man some of that good Garden Grove wood. That tree is, you know, generations of people going to Saint Columbas have enjoyed that tree and it's a part of the city. Anyways, I'd like, if you guys could ask Public Works to put in a word for us. And also, I wanted to get him to carve a nice wooden cross for Saint Columbas. I talked to some of the members there and they'd really like that. So if you have any influence, that would be wonderful.
Can we give him the tree?
Um.
We don't know what parks he wants, let him have the whole thing.
All right, there's another, I'd like you to share your influence if possible. Now, this is with our friends, the Great Wolf Water Park. Last Saturday, at the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association meeting, where you were talking about, you know, how that hotel is for.
Anyway, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks for coming, Dave.
I'm going for a record tonight. I wanted to ask you to lend your influence over a couple city departments tonight. First of all, a sad thing happened on Stanford Avenue recently. It was discovered that a, an old, what we'll call a historic tree, a multi-generational tree, it's even older than you, Bruce, has gotten a, what's called a root disease. And unfortunately, it seems it's going to have to be taken down. That tree is near St. Columbas Church and it's a California pepper tree. It's been there for nearly 100 years, although it hasn't been dated, the size of it would lead us to believe about that era. Well, Public Works is going to be taking that tree down, most likely. I understand there's an injunction against it by the property owner, but chances are he's not going to, only, he'll just stretch that out. So anyways, I talked to Public Works and they stated that the wood will all go to this landscaping company that tears it out. I would like to have X amount, very small portion, maybe a large branch saved, to give to a local Garden Grove woodworker. He's a retired gentleman that lives off Paloma Street and he makes these great walking sticks. He actually carves in important dates and things in your life into them. And, you know, he's a retired guy. He's in his garage whittling away all day. I think that...
Josh, you can have the whole tree.
Tell Public Works. Anyways, I'd like to get this man some of that good Garden Grove wood. That tree is, you know, generations of people going to St. Columbas have enjoyed that tree and it's a part of the city. Anyways, I'd like, if you guys could ask Public Works to put in a word for us. And also, I wanted to get him to carve a nice wooden cross for St. Columbas. I talked to some of the members there and they'd really like that. So if you have any influence, that would be wonderful.
Can we give him the tree? We don't know what parks he wants. Let him have the whole thing.
All right. There's another, I'd like you to share your influence if possible. Now, this is with our friends, the Great Wolf Water Park. Last Saturday, at the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association meeting, where you were talking about, you know, how that hotel is for the kids. And I was thinking, what a shame it is that a large percentage of our population can't afford the $300 a night to go use that park. But we have some great kids that would be deserving. So my thoughts are, we get with the hotel and the Garden Grove Unified School District and we work out a rewards program for our best, most achieving students. We pick two kids a month from each school and we let them and their parents or a couple brothers and sisters all get to use the park for a day. If there's any problem with routiness, they have to go. But I think it would be a great community outreach thing for the hotel and something great that we could do for our kids.
Well, you're not quite right on having to rent a room. And I, I might have sent you in the wrong direction on that, but you, they do do birthday parties and things like that for local citizens or people drive here to do it there.
Okay.
So that, there is an opening for them without renting a $300 room and it's, right now it's about $260 a room now, so...
Okay. Well, with parking and taxes and whatnot, it would get up to three if you were to rent a room and based on occupancy and whatnot. Anyways, the thing is, the thing is, it's probably out of reach of the average family here. So it would be something to consider as a rewards program. I think that would be a great move for us. And lastly, I'd like to close out this meeting in honor, if we could, of the Azteca Restaurant. After 22 years of business, JJ's management, a sad day has come when the sign has come down on the Azteca and he's no longer running Graceland on the West Coast here. The Azteca has been an awesome place for us all. Chris, you've had parties there. We've all enjoyed times. We had one of the most unique, coolest things around and sadly, it's going to be changing under new management. We'll still go, go there and support our local businesses, but it'll just never be the same. Thank you.
Rebecca Ruiz.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater and council members. My name is Rebecca Ruiz and I'm a, I'm a volunteer committee member for Relay for Life. I'm here today to ask permission of the city council to place purple ribbons surrounding the area of Garden Grove High School. The reason why we picked this location is Garden Grove High School is our location for our upcoming event of Relay for Life. If permission granted, ribbons will be placed starting July 3rd and will be brought down July 14th, a day after our event. Please allow us to place purple ribbons to help promote Relay for Life and increase awareness of cancer.
Can we let them get away with putting purple ribbons on the school grounds? I don't think we have anything to say about the school grounds.
Streets of Garden Grove Boulevard, Euclid, Chapman, and maybe West, just around here.
Politicians put signs out at election time. And when they put signs on somebody else's property, they're really giving that sign away. I mean, there's no reason that guy that owns that property, he ended up tearing it up and shredded it or whatever he wants to do with it. So we'll let you put up the purple signs without, without hurting you and finding you or anything like that, but you put one on somebody's property and they may just take it off and, so it doesn't protect your, us telling you it's okay to do it doesn't protect you from private property owners.
I guess I'm, should have said the trees on the public street, like the ones where they have like the nice decorated...
How big are ribbons are these?
Not that big.
You nail them up, you, you put them on with tape or wire or...
Yeah, the logistics of the ribbon is getting a purple tablecloth from Dollar Tree, cutting them into strips and then making ribbons and wrapping them around the trees.
Anybody opposed to that? Go ahead, do it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Well, last Saturday, we had a very nice event in Garden Grove. Well, it's now the Garden Grove Homeowners Association, used to be more specific, but the mayor was there, a couple of members of our council were there. It was delightful to have all of these people there and to hear their comments. I think they did a marvelous job of putting this together and I think Maureen, who's here tonight, deserves a round of applause. On another note, we established this country a long time ago. We declared our independence from Great Britain or England at that time. And we're celebrating that coming up on July 4th, our Independence Day. And it's entirely proper that we do this, celebrate what we have been given by those who founded this country. A country ruled by law, not by edict, not by decree, but by law. And I, I know it's a great three-day weekend, everybody celebrates and has barbecues, but we need to reflect on what the founders really decided needed to be done to establish a society that can go from decade to decade, century to century, and still provide freedom for its people. We're having a celebration on July 4th at the American Legion Post on Beach Boulevard. That's between Hazard and Bolsa, on the east side of the street, right across from the Memorial Park. The event is open to everyone. We'd love to see everyone come to our event. It's a potluck. If you have a special dish you like to cook up, bring it with you. But otherwise, we'll have hamburgers, hot dogs, and all kinds of special treats for everyone. And this is our way of saying, we love this country and we want it to continue the way it's been designed to go. And we'd love to have you all come and join us. Chris Fawn and Chris Beard have taken the opportunity to come and enjoy our hospitality and we'd love to see them come back. We'd love to see all of our council members come and enjoy this day with us. So it's July 4th. It's at the American Legion Post on Beach Boulevard. And the address is 14582, the Beach Boulevard. And if you have questions on how to get there or anything else, you can call the post, preferably in the evenings, because we, at the moment, don't have someone there handling the phone in the daytime. And the phone number is 714-506-0545. So please, come and join us on the 4th of July and help us celebrate our independence.
What time again, Charles?
From noon to 4:00. So bring what you like and enjoy the party.
Greg Durfee.
All of you there and council, I'm here tonight after a tour of the cities of Orange County so far. Surprised that many cities are not aware of the great efforts of OCTA and SCAG. I'd like to encourage the city to look at the bigger picture. All my research shows the economic engine can't happen, reimagination can't happen, but the timeframe that we have to reimagine and get the grants and get the master plan are conflicting. I would encourage the city council to take the different approach and create the environment for the opportunity by Caltrans standards to create the infrastructure of interest to public. And creating bicycle clubs, creating scholarships, that would be like OCTA to have a competition with the football team of Garden Grove, for example. You'd have a bicycle club competing. If you ever think about football and basketball and a baseball game, when it's offseason, they ride bikes, they're staying more endurance in terms of coming back on the game field. Otherwise, we are going to miss it in three years, the total picture of our funding for federal, 360 million. I am helping another city for the effort of their master plan. I was asked by the mayor personally. It's going to take two years. There's no way around it. So when we get their money in October and here comes the timeframe for the federal funds, we're due for November for another grant round, we're not ready. We don't qualify. So it's up to the council where you want to go with this idea and how far you want to pursue the grants that are available. And SCAG has another round in August, I'm told, with some 50 million. The next thing would be to suggest that we look at Arizona model. City of Tucson has an excellent program and they have a great bicycle coordinator and she's worth wealth, a buck of knowledge. So I've given that to staff and she has all kinds of federal funds that'll fund your program. If not, private corporations will fund cyclovis. It's everything, it's on their page. So I would encourage the city to explore other opportunities to see how they do it. I've given you all the federal fund grant opportunities. The next thing I would suggest is maybe get some T-shirts going, promoting it. Maybe the council would like to get on the movie theaters at the local theater and have a PSA and saying, welcome to Garden Grove and we're having a cyclovia. Councils that I've talked to are excited about it and staff, so I think you have something going. I would ask the OCTA board members to promote the cyclovia through trains as a community opportunity to come down, experience Garden Grove and get it on the school district of Orange County, Chapman University, they're big on bikes. I think we need to, to pump this up as a demonstration of what Orange County can do since we have Samosa October 5th. There's just a lot of opportunities for Garden Grove to take Main Street and put it back where it should be. But it's up to the council and the staff limitations to hire grant application specialists. Contract it out because it's from the experts I've talked to from Arizona here, Andy the commissioner, it's over our heads. So if we're going to take what's available funds, I would urge this council to have hands in it and get moving forward while the money is available and restart your engine of the economy of Garden Grove. And I would encourage the council to look at creating a bike nonprofit status organization, give in students, according to the George West of Unified School District here, not all students are going to be going to college. Give them hands, and wrench, get them busy on a bike, less crime. I think we need that. The only ones are Newport Beach, no correction, Huntington Beach and Santa Ana, and we need one in this area. And the foundation could also raise light funds, sell T-shirts, could sell and give law enforcement the lights on bikes, because Arizona's doing all this. I'm not speaking about a wish list that's maybe we could do, they're doing it. So I'd encourage the council, take that City of Tucson website and just, on a cup of coffee and go, wow, because we need to do it in Garden Grove. Thank you.
We have a boy scout out there, I'd like to recognize. What troop are you from, son?
288.
288 and you're here for some kind of a badge, I think. Nice to have you here. We're going to take five minutes and be right back. If I got that right?
Yes.
Okay, recess it and go to successor and sanitation.
Mayor, we will call the June 24th meeting of the Successor Agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council and San District, so we'll move on. We have no consent items. There's one public hearing, item 3A.
Mr. Chairman, 3A is a public hearing to consider adopting the annual budget for the successor agency and Jim Delalong is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Chair and members of the successor agency. As you are aware, redevelopment agencies in California were dissolved back in February 2012. As a result of the dissolution, successor agencies were formed to conduct the winding down of former redevelopment agencies. This includes the implementation of agreements and projects existing prior to dissolution as well as the payoff of the former agency's obligations. To do this, every six months, twice per fiscal year, agencies are required to submit recognized obligation payment schedules, or ROPS, to their respective oversight boards and the California Department of Finance. The budget presented to you today is based on the ROPS for fiscal year 1415. This is a balanced budget. It is based on the successor agency's approved recognized obligation payment schedule for July 1, 2014, through December 31st, 2014, and the estimated recognized obligation payment schedule for January 1, 2015, through June 30, 2015. This ROPS is not due until October 1, 2014. For fiscal year 2014-15, the successor agency will administer the ROPS as approved by the State Department of Finance and will implement the DDA projects approved by the Oversight Board and the State Department of Finance as enforceable obligations. These projects include the Great Wolf Lodge Water Park Hotel on Harbor Boulevard between Palm Street and Lamson Avenue, the Burkhurst Triangle Project at the northwest corner of Burkhurst Street and Garden Grove Boulevard, and what we call the Site B2 Hotel on Harbor Boulevard, just south of the Sheraton Hotel. Also included in this budget is $641,000 for operations and overhead associated with the operation of the successor agency. This amount is limited by law to 3% of the approved recognized obligation payment schedules, or $250,000 annually, whichever is more. All of the revenue that used to go to the redevelopment agency now goes into a trust fund administered by the county. The county disperses funds to the successor agency based on our approved ROPS to pay those obligations. This budget is not based on, nor do any of the payments in this budget involve city funds. And that concludes my presentation, but Mr. Okarigi has some numbers he'd like to share with you.
Well, the total disbursements from that trust fund, which we consider revenue to the successor agency totals are $27.1 million. And I think, as Jim pointed out, $641,000 goes to the overhead to run the operations of the successor agency. And the remainder, which is $26.46 million, goes to pay the recognized obligation payments. And all of those recognized obligation payments are listed in your package, Schedule II. Under that, I had, I had them, the item under consideration here, 3A. Schedule II provides all the details that add up to the $26.46 million. And that's it. We can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff? I have one quick one, just regarding the operations and overhead. Was it not, how does that work? Like, wasn't it 5% last year and then they start tapering it down or something?
Yeah.
3% in the new budget going forward, but last year was 5% and they're kind of tightening...
That is correct.
The DOF is tightening how much they allow in terms of...
Yeah, that's correct.
What's it look like going forward then? Does it stay 3% or does it keep sort of dwindling down or...
I think it stays 3% going forward.
Perpetuity, whatever. It's not like it's going to go to 1% next year and then...
No.
We get zero.
There's no chance in gobbling up the whole 21 million, is there?
Tried before.
No, as long as, as Jim mentioned, every six months, you approve a, a list of payment obligations. So as long as the Department of Finance approves that list, then they'll approve the funding. So they go hand in hand.
Okay, any other comments? This is a public hearing.
Yes.
So we need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Move the issue.
I'll second that. Call the vote.
Doesn't work. Doesn't work.
I'm going to take a roll call vote.
Member Broadwater?
Here. Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Yes. Member Fan?
Aye.
Member Beard?
Aye.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, all ayes have it.
Thank you. Okay, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we are adjourned to, adjourned straight to the Sand District?
Correct.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
And President Fan?
Here. We've already conducted oral communications. We'll go to consent items. Anything to be pulled or discussed?
Move the issue.
Second.
Member Broadwater?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Beard?
Aye.
And President Fan?
Aye. So that'll be five yes votes for that. And then we'll go on to item 3A at this time for the public hearings.
Yes, Mr. President, you actually have a series of four public hearings, so we'll take them one at a time.
Can these all be acted on in one motion? Is that how it read, or do they each have to get acted on separately?
They get separately. Yeah, so, separate public hearing, separate action. Mr., the first one is to consider charges for folks that are outside our city limits, and Jeff Kuramoto is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. District Board President and Board Members, item 3A is the annual process that allows the city to collect sewer service charges through the property tax rule for those sewer customers that are outside the city limits and do not receive water services from the city. These are sections of the district in the county areas near Anaheim and Stanton. In order to place the sewer charges on the tax rule, the board must conduct a public hearing on the report identifying the fees to be collected and adopt the resolution approving the report. The attached resolution would approve the annual report detailing the service charges for the area noted herein, and direct that the charges be collected on the tax rule. It is recommended that the sanitary district board of directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection of sewer service fees for properties served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Are the fees for these outsiders, are they in line with our own fees?
Yes, they are, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to open for public hearing. Anyone want to comment on this item? All right, seeing there's none, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Secretary, any protests on this issue?
Mr. President, there has not been a majority protest.
Any further discussions?
I'll move 3A.
I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Member Broadwater?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Aye. All right, that'd be five yes votes on that. Next one will go through item 3B.
Mr. President, item 3B is a public hearing to consider authorizing refuge collection for those properties in Improvement District Number One. And again, Mr. Kuramoto is here to give a staff report on this item.
Item 3B relates to the sanitary district's Improvement District Number One. This improvement district is made up of those areas that, prior to becoming a subsidiary district of the city in 1997, were formerly in the Midway City Sanitary District. The Midway City Sanitary District collected sanitary service charges by placing them on the tax rule. In order to continue this system for those customers and the waste collector, the sanitary board of directors must, each year, conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the collection on the tax rule of disposal and refuge collection fees in District Number One, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for collection of the fees on the property tax bills. The service charge for the standard residential service in District Number One is $19.19 per month, or $230.28 per year. A written report has been prepared and filed with the secretary containing a description of each parcel of real property receiving services for refuge, collection, and disposal services in Improvement District Number One, and the proposed charges for each parcel. Staff recommends that the sanitary district board of directors conduct the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax rule of disposal and refuge collection fees in District Number One by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Do you have any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anyone want to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. And Madam Secretary, any protest on this issue?
Mr. President, there is not a majority protest.
Okay. Any further discussions?
Move it.
Second. Call for vote, please.
Member Broadwater?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Aye. That'd be five yes votes. And then, item 3C.
Mr. President, item 3C is a public hearing to consider collecting delinquent charges on our refuge collection, and Mr. Kuramoto is here to give a staff report on this item as well.
Item 3C asks that the sanitary district board adopt a attached resolution and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of delinquent solid waste fees on the property tax bills. For public waste service bills, customers quarterly for the refuge collection and solid waste disposal. If a billing remains unpaid for a period of 60 days or more, at the end of the fiscal year, the assessment process may be implemented. The last relevant billing was prepared and mailed in February of this year. All charges remaining on that billing became delinquent May 1, 2014. 60 days after the delinquency date, the delinquent amount plus the associated 10% penalty may be filed with the county auditor. The amount submitted and recorded by parcel would be collected at the same time and in the same manner as regular county property taxes. The parcels also become subject to the same penalties and to the same procedure for foreclosure and sale as provided for ordinary county taxes. Prior to the fees becoming a lien against the property, the individual property owner is notified of the delinquent amount and the date and the time of the public hearing. To further ensure that all parties are aware of the potential lien, a notice announcing this hearing date was published in the Orange County News, June 4th and June 11th of this year. It is recommended that the board of directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the imposition of liens for the collection of delinquent refuge collection and disposal fees by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for assessment on the appropriate parcels. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Any questions? I have one. Do you know how many homes or residents are on the list of delinquency?
Currently, as of the 24th of June, it was 1,515 parcels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And is there an average penalty for each one, as far as the cost?
Have the full, the total dollar amount of the 15, 15 parcels, $262,562.9.
Substantial.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Any comments on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Sec...
Go ahead.
Madam Secretary, any protests on this matter?
Mr. President, there is not a majority protest.
All right. Any further discussion, members?
Move the issue.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Member Broadwater?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Beard?
Yes.
President Fan?
Aye. That'll make it five yes votes. And then lastly, we will go to the budget for the sanitary district.
Yes, Mr. President, it is a public hearing, and Mr. Okuriki will give the budget presentation for the Sand District.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. The district board president, board members, with this item, staff is requesting that the board review the proposed budget and approve the attached resolutions adopting the annual budget for the Garden Grove Sanitary District for 2014-15 fiscal year. The more detailed district operational goals for next year are outlined in your memo in your, in your packet. A few of them are highlighted here on the slide. And we do have the public works director here that can answer any detailed questions that you may have. The budget as proposed for both sewer and solid waste, which constitutes the sanitary district, is a balanced budget. Going first for the sewer funds, the proposed budget provides for the necessary funding to continue the planned sewer capital program that include the capacity and structural deficiencies identified in the 2005 sewer study. Also, staff plans to continue the Fats Oil and Grease Control Education during the upcoming fiscal year. For the solid waste program, the focus during the year will be on continuing the AB 939 Waste Division efforts that will enable the cities to stay within the required limits, and demonstration of good faith effort that calls for public education event with regards to various recycling strategies. The department also intends to continue the manhole inspection and replacement program. In terms of numbers, focusing on the sewer funds, we do have a beginning balance of about $1.5 million in projected revenue collections during the fiscal year, so, projected collections in terms of revenue total of $11.15 million for total funds available for the fiscal year of $12.6 million. Operation and maintenance has allocation of $3.9 million. Contractual services, $1.2 million. Debt service to service the bonds that were issued a few years back, the proceeds of which are being used to do the structural and capacity work, is $1.46 million. And we do have a very robust ongoing capital replacement and capital improvement program. As you can see there, $1.47 million is allocated to the replacement program, and for capital improvements, there's an allocation of $3.5 million for the total of $11.6 million. And that provides the sewer operations what it needs in terms of operations and capital work for the upcoming fiscal year. With respect to solid waste, we do have a beginning balance of approximately $70,000. Projected revenue here, which constitutes a couple of things. One is the city collections, that's those that walk into City Hall to pay their solid waste fees. And also, the second component is the franchise fee that the city collects from the waste hauler. The total of that, we're estimating $3.3 million. Operations and maintenance, which goes to fund the operational support to manage the contract and also the whole solid waste operations from the citizen, is about $1.1 million. We do plan to set aside approximately $300 in reserves, some of which will go towards future mitigation efforts at the landfill. And the contractual services there is approximately $1.79 million for a total of $3.3 million for the operations in the fiscal year. And that concludes my report. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? I have one. As far as on 3D3, can you talk to us more about the gap issue and the subject limitation? I was reading that I couldn't quite wrap my hands around it, so...
Okay. I do have that, a separate report for that, and I can go through that right now if you want to take all three at the same time.
Oh, okay, so we're just talking about 3D1 at this time, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I can get into the 3D2.
Take them all.
Take them all, okay. Well, 3D2 is reappropriation of project balances and encumbrances for the fiscal year. And that part is essentially, for work that we have in progress, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, we want to be able to carry over the funds to continue those projects in the new, in the new year. So that's what this resolution does, for you to approve, so that those remaining balances that are connected to existing projects can be carried over to the following year. D3, it's the appropriation limit item. Pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution, as amended by Proposition 4, which is the GAN initiative, it places an annual limit on the appropriation of tax proceeds that can be made from all levels of government in the state, including sanitary districts. The annual spending limit is based on an appropriation amount in fiscal year 1978-79, which is the base year. And subsequent to that base year, all adjustments are made based on annual population growth and cost of living factor. Those two factors are multiplied together and used to increase the base every year. And the factors are prepared by, are provided by the State Department of Finance. For cost of living, the growth factor provided to us this year is a negative 0.23%. Last year, that number was 5.1, I believe, 5.79% or thereabout. And it represents the change in California per capita personal income. The county population growth factor that we are being asked to use is 0.93% in the calculation, which is the projected growth for the fiscal year in the overall county population. And based on these factors, the calculated number for the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2014-15, it's about $11.1 million. And, you know, with the calculations that we have done, and the details that are provided in the memo, the proposed district budget that is subject to that limit is only $2.48 million, which essentially means that you still have the gap between the $11.1 and the $2.48 million for which you can appropriate additional expenditures, to the extent that you have revenues to cover them. And that's essentially what that gap is. You know, it's a gap that, you know, it's a room that you have to appropriate more monies if you have revenues to cover those expenditures. And that really concludes my report on that, and I can take any questions you have.
So the 2.4 million that we have there, the 2481, subject to the limit, where is that number obtained from?
That number comes from, let me turn it to you. That number comes from a calculation that, when we look at, you know, a detailed report that we calculate the tax proceeds of the district and non-tax proceeds of the district. And within that, the tax proceeds limit, that's how much that is determined that you can appropriate out of that limit for the tax proceeds portion of the district.
Does everyone else understand this concept? Because I'm a little loopy on this one here.
Well, you're the leader of our band.
What's that, sir? No, no, no. I'd just like to approve on what, you know, I understand. So right now, I'm a little lost, and I don't know if any of us is, too.
We're going to go through it again in the city portion of it, because the city is also subject to GAN limit. I wish I could simplify. I don't know if you can ask me specific questions that I can answer, and maybe that will help...
Okay. So the $2,481,000, so you explained that number, and so the difference is the gap. And so, when you say which additional appropriations can be made, what exactly does that mean in actuality?
Well, in actuality, what it means is that when you look at the sewer budget, the total sewer budget here of $3.26 million, when we break that total budget down, $2.48 million of that is subject to appropriations limit.
Go to the San District. Not, not, this is solid waste.
How?
You referenced the solid waste budget.
Yeah, the solid waste budget.
You were just talking about sewer.
Sewer, oh, excuse me, sorry. All right. Yeah, using the sewer fund, precisely. The total budget of $11.6 million. The only portion of it that is subject to GAN limit is $2.48 million. But our calculated maximum limit for GAN, which is the limitation for tax, you know, appropriations out of tax proceeds, is $11.1 million, which essentially means that the gap, the difference between the two, $8.6 million, is available for additional appropriations. And you can appropriate additional monies if you have the revenues to cover that.
Okay. So the $2.4 million is basically the standard that was set back in 1979? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the standard was set in 1979. Every year, we increase it. We adjust it by the per capita income factor and the population growth factor. So every year, it sort of increases. This is one of the first years that there's a negative per capita income. But when you multiply it with the population growth, it still comes out positive, and it's a very small, small increase. So that number grows, it grows every year since 1978. And today, our calculated number, it's that $11.136 million. And when we look at the sewer funds, on the, the budget is $11.6 million, the revenue is about $11.1. Out of that total revenue that is coming there, $2.48 million is what comes through as tax. The other ones are fee for service. And the fee for service is not subject to GAN limitation.
Gotcha, okay.
So the only portion that is, that you can call actual tax is what's subject to the GAN limit. And you cannot appropriate more than you're getting. Even though we have this limit of $11.1, yeah, to the extent that we receive only $2.48, that's what is subject to GAN limit, and that's what we appropriate.
Okay. Understand now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. All right. At this time, let's see, we are going to open up for any public hearing. Any comments?
Are you doing all three?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussions? All right. Call for a vote. Actually, motion.
So moved. For all three.
Yes.
Second.
And call for a vote.
Okay. Member Broadwater.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Nguyen.
Yes.
Member Beard.
Yes.
And President Fan.
Yes.
The ayes have it.
All right. Sorry, guys. I just had to see what the heck I was approving, so... Let's see. No items for consideration? Any other matters from the boards? All right, we'll adjourn. Our July 22 meeting is canceled. Our next meeting will be August 26 at 6:30. Back to council.
August 26, okay, yes. Let's go to, we'll reopen the City Council, and we're going to go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that Items 6A through 6H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Motion?
Yes. If I may, Mayor, please pull to discuss 6D, E, and I need to recuse myself, sir, on 6F as on the, on the board for Horizon.
Entertaining a motion for the balance.
So moved for the balance.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Let's go to 6D.
6D, I just have a question. It seems like we're almost doubling, if I'm not mistaken, the additional contract amount. And the explanation was basically, apparently, the person have access to the Black Angus Building and the likes to justify the double rate increase. Can you give me more insight about how that was not taken care of the first time around?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Fan, Mr. Mayor. The contract was increased to account for some dumping activity on our, I believe it was Hotel Site C, which we needed that immediately cleared off. So we executed a change order on the Black Angus property to have that material removed. And that about doubled the contract.
I guess my concern would be, is any possible potential for more cost bleeding in the future?
This one, no. Like I said, the increase was only, was only to accommodate the immediate removal of that material. We needed to do that because the contractor for the Water Park Hotel needed to use that particular lot for, to basically park their vehicles.
Okay.
Had to be done eventually anyway, didn't it?
Oh, of course.
Let me ask you a question. What are we doing with the, with the restaurant?
We're going to demolish it.
Do we turn it down? You know, we have a contractor for destroying things here in Garden Grove. Does Lynn ever get a chance to go around this stuff?
Have to bid on it. It's open to everybody. In fact, we have provisions in our purchasing code to give favor to the local contractors.
Do you have any idea whether the Garden Grove contractor for turning it down, did he bid on it?
I'm not aware of, I don't think that it's gone out at this particular point in time, and I'd really have to check on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to know about it, though. I'd like to have Garden Grove guys doing it, if it's possible.
Yes, sir.
Basically, the contract didn't double. We had added another building. Is that right?
What we added was the pickup of the dumped material on, I believe it was Hotel Site C. I could be wrong on this side.
But we didn't have that originally.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. So we have added work.
Yes.
And that's, what's the square footage of that job?
It was given in tons, and I'd have to look to actually see the exact amount of tons, Councilmember.
Yeah, it wasn't a building. It was a lot that...
The base.
Trucks came in and illegally dumped their loads on our property.
Okay.
And of course, we had to haul them away, and that's what the additional cost is for.
Do we get to, get reimbursed for that? Do we know who dumped it?
They come in the middle of the night, no, unfortunately. We have this problem periodically with our lots. We try to secure them.
Okay.
But they'll ram the gate, they'll dump their load and take off in the middle of the night.
I see.
It's a problem that we've seen before, unfortunately.
Okay. No, no problem. You don't need to give me the tonnage.
Entertaining a mo, oh, yeah, entertaining a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Fan.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Let's go to 6E.
Yes, 6E wants us to have a time limit or a timetable of when this extension will end. It didn't seem to have a set time.
Excuse me, Councilman Fan. The, the contract is just month-to-month. Our current contract expires in August 31st, and we're currently working through the RFP process in order to get a new contract. So we just wanted to have a contract in place with CARE to cover that extension until we get a new RFP in place.
So this is month-to-month, chief?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other questions? Entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Have a motion. Second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Fan.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Let's go to 6F.
Should I step out, Mayor?
Yeah.
What are we doing with Horizon Cross?
Mr. Mayor, this is extending the current contract. We're in the middle of an RFP process, but we also, as you know, there's an audit going on with Horizon. They were one of the bidders on our, on our new RFP process, and we were withholding, going ahead and making a selection until we knew whether or not the audit would reveal something that we would not keep Horizon as an eligible bidder. So while this is still going on, we need to extend the current contract until such time we make a selection. So this will extend the current contract with Horizon to provide the transportation services until we award a new contract.
Do we know how long that would be?
We were hoping to hear something soon relative to the audit and whether or not they would stay in. But we think within 30 days, we'll know.
Is Transportation 30 doing the audit?
Yes.
Any other questions? Entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
I'm actually going to abstain because of my involvement with those CTA, and I don't want to take a position on it before they conduct, before they finish their audit.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes.
And Councilmember Fan is absent.
Let's go to 7A, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is a public hearing to consider six different budget actions, and Mr. Okeuriki will give a staff report on all the items. You'll hold one public hearing for all six items, and I believe you can take one action for all six unless you want to call out a specific one. So at this time, Mr. Okeuriki will give a staff report on all six budget items.
Thank you, Mr. Fattel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens. I do have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation with additional, with additional budget insights and details for you tonight. But before I get into that, I'd like to quickly run through what you have in your agenda packet. You have all the staff memo and all the budget resolutions that detail the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 capital and operations expenditures of the city, and all the projected revenue and other funding sources to pay for them. Agenda 7A addresses the city's basic, what we call the basic budget, which includes all of the city's operating budget for basic general fund services. It also includes water, cable services, grant services, capital improvements, mobile home park, we don't have that anymore, and the special assessment funds. The rest of the items from 7A2 through 7A6 are all the related and enabling resolutions that you are being asked to approve tonight to effectively pass all of the city's 2014-15 fiscal year proposed budget. And as the city manager pointed out, you can take them together at the end of the presentation. Jumping into the PowerPoint, this part of the PowerPoint...
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does this, does this budget show up on this?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does. This part of the presentation, you know, covers the basic services component. Again, you know, it's largely the city's general purpose fund, which is the principal operating, operations fund of the city. Well, right off, I'm glad to say that we do have a proposed 2014-15 basic services budget that is balanced. It is largely a firmed-up version of the preliminary budget that staff reviewed with you at the study session that was held to look at the current year budget year-to-date and make preliminary budget projections on March 11, 2014. In total, it is a restrained budget, but also a catch-up budget that looks to begin to restore staff capacity and resources necessary to continue to provide quality and essential services to our citizens. Financially, it has been quite a ride since the 2007-2008 recession. And we did put in place a three-year financial plan. This budget represents the third and the final leg of that plan. We will be working on a new year, a new three-year financial plan this fall that will take into account, you know, the current climate, and also help us chart a path forward over the next three years. Let's begin to look at the current fiscal year. Revenue is coming in nicely. You know, the economy is beginning to pick up, and we've seen ourselves start revenue recover nicely, and largely on account of high gas prices. Property tax has remained very solid, as we expected, and hotel tax are doing much better. And bottom line, I think our revenue will exceed our budget targets at the end of, when we finally close the books. On the expenditure side, we are on target with projected expenditures. In fact, when all is said and done, I fully anticipate that we will have some expenditure savings. However, at this point, we have not yet closed the books, and we'll wait till we've closed the books and the auditors have come and looked at the numbers to actually say at that point how much we in fact have at the end of the fiscal year. But we did do some preliminary projections, and based on those preliminary projections, for what we know right now, we know that revenue, like I said, is exceeding budget slightly. On the, the first column there that you're looking at is the budget. The second column of numbers there is the updated projections. And this is based on our February close. And again, revenue is slightly ahead of budget. On the expenditure side, we have not adjusted those numbers, but like I said, I fully anticipate that when all is said and done, we will come in a little less than budget on the expenditure side. So as it stands today, we're still looking at just a little bit better than was budgeted. And, you know, at this point, we're not projecting a carryover, carrying over any amount to next fiscal year. But again, once we close, finally close, and we have all the numbers audited, I expect that we will do a little better than what we are projecting here. And to the extent that we realize any significant savings, all we need, all we plan to do is replenish whatever we're taking out from the reserves or the drawdowns from all the internal service funds. Basically, making sure that we replenish all those funds back before we declare any kind of surplus. Now, looking ahead, just within the context of preparing our next year's budget, revenue is beginning, revenue is looking good. The economy seems to be improving, but very slowly. There's been a lot of mixed signals out there. Unemployment is low, but reportedly, employment levels are low as well. There's been mixed consumer confidence reporting. One month is slightly up, the next is down. And so, we're riding sort of a wave here, you know, there's no excitement in terms of, you know, where the economy is going decidedly. So that's the nature of the, the economy today and the context in which we're building this budget. Part of what seems to be, you know, somewhat of a good news is that the state is doing well, and they're balancing their budget and in fact declaring surplus, which I think is good news for cities and local government. Because when the state, when the state is doing well, that means less pressure on local government, and we're not, we're less concerned about the state wanting to take away funds from the local government or cities, and cities. City-specific issues, which is the hopeful part of the whole situation, is that development activities are restarting. We've made steady progress with Department of We've made steady progress with Department of Finance in terms of securing all the approvals that we need to move forward with the former redevelopment agency projects. The Great Wolf Lodge did break ground, and we're making steady progress with regards to the Brokers Triangle breaking ground soon, hopefully. And we also have the Sybey Two discussions in full gear, and Walmart is also projecting opening sometime this summer. So all of that looks good for the city. However, you know, just a cautionary note there that, you know, we continue to have budget deficits. Our expenditures have ten, you know, over the past years have been outpacing the revenues. And until we cash in on all these new projects in terms of revenue they generate and really close that gap, that's where we can declare, you know, that really we have, you know, I made some good, good progress. I like this picture because, again, I showed it last year, a couple of years, I've been showing the same picture. This is basically what I think the economy is doing, is chugging along and, you know, moving very slow, but at least for the time being, it appears to be going in the right direction, improving steadily, but very slowly. Now, our budget approach, you know, focusing on the city budget, our budget approach has been one of restraint and prudence. We continue to recommend that we remain restrained in terms of growing our budget until, again, like I said before, the revenue picture improves. And that's basically, we're expecting that to happen in the next couple of years. Our three-pronged budget strategy of cutting costs and containing cost and tapping rainy day funds and aggressively pursuing new revenue sources, that has worked for us. And that's, we've stayed the course, and as I pointed out, this fiscal year 14-15 budget is the third and final leg of the existing three-year plan. But we are a little bit more hopeful. The economy recovery appears to be getting pace, and we have some major projects, as I pointed out before, underway. Again, the budget 14-15 begins to restore some essential services capacity and effect a catch-up budget that attempts to make up some lost ground and restore services to the community. If we focus on the revenue first, how will you pay for this? Our revenue, again, is just driven by the urban flow of the economy. We've had some three major revenue categories that's been, you know, showing some good recovery signs. Sales tax has recovered back to the level that it was before the recession. Our hotel tax has been growing, and the next slide I'll show you the growth over the past five years with regards to hotel tax revenues. Our property tax has remained very stable, and it's a revenue source that we can count on. Again, some of the major projects I pointed out before underway, the Great Wolf Lodge, Brokers Triangle, and the Walmart. This chart shows detailed revenue of our, detailed outline of our revenues. Just focusing on the two columns there that are highlighted, which are 2019, which are considered the depth of the trough of the recession and where we are today. If you look at sales tax, our sales tax dropped significantly. At the time, we realized only $14 million from sales tax. And today, we are projecting year-end of $20.1 million, and next year, we're estimating we'll realize approximately $20.5 million in sales tax revenues. A lot of that is driven by high gas prices, but nonetheless, you know, it's significantly more than we had a few years back. Property tax has remained, you know, is grown, but, you know, not as significant as the others. In 2019, we realized about $11.9 million. Today, we're estimating $13.5 million in fiscal year 14-15. Hotel tax, which is the transit occupancy tax in the middle there, 2019, approximately the city's share of transit occupancy tax is about $8.2 million. And we are projecting to realize close to $16.5 million in fiscal year 2014-15. That essentially, if you look at the total, bottom line, total general purpose, compare the $71.45 million in 2009 to approximately $89.755 million being projected for next fiscal year. So that's why they change on the revenue front. So again, you know, we are very encouraged that things are looking good, but we are not at the point where we're bristling with confidence that this will continue in any significant way that, you know, the economy is going to grow much more than it has been in the past year or so.
You know, your tenant occupancy tax, I mean, basically at the beginning of the recession, 2008 and 2009, it was at 9,000 and went down one year, but it grew every year after that.
Right.
Excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, those are like in millions. You know, it dropped down to like 8.2 million, 8.283 million dollars, and it has grown, Mr. Mayor.
No, it's doubled.
Yeah. Yeah. And we should expect in 2000, maybe 16, 17, significantly more once the hotels open and reach a certain level of occupancy. So in a couple of years, we should see that revenue be our biggest source of revenue in the city. It will eclipse the sales tax, which today stands at $20.5 million. So, and, and the other thing I think I've said this before, this is the one revenue that is set locally, collected locally, and kept locally. The rest of the other revenues, we have to pass through somebody else to--
Well, don't talk about it too loudly.
So that's, that's really, like I said, this is encouraging news, but as much revenue as we've realized, on the expenditure side, our expenditure, you know, it's currently outpacing our revenue growth. Again, the expenditure, which is essentially the budget that is being approved, the appropriations that is being approved, this year is the third year of the financial plan, and we're looking at it as a catch-up budget. Over the past couple of years, we've really cut back and tightened our belt. At this point, it's beginning to affect services, and we're beginning slowly to restore some capacity to enable staff to be able to offer those services to our citizens. And again, you know, as I said before, the structural deficit does persist, we want to stay restrained, and, and we want to make sure that we don't expand our budget too fast, and, and be patient for the revenues that we're anticipating to come in before expanding the budget too much. For some of the impacts, some of the things that were included in this year's budget, right off the bat, that is included as part of the base budget, we have been on the work follow for the past two years, and staff, you know, every member of the staff have made that sacrifice to take a salary cut that is approximately 4.65%. Effective July 1, we are recommending that we lift it, that we rescind that follow, but once we do that, that adds approximately a million point oh four to the budget, as part of the base budget. We have had some negotiated base budget adjustments, salary adjustments that are negotiated, and, you know, as part of this catching up, you know, for the, all the sacrifices over the past couple of years. And we estimate that the total impact of that, some of the adjustments that were made in January, April, the April one was tied to the opening of, or the groundbreaking of the Great Wolf, and part of the negotiated adjustments of July 1, all of that, the impact will add approximately $2.3 million to the budget. The other part, retirement adjustment of $913,000 from PERS, that we don't have much control over. You know, it's an adjustment that PERS has made relative to some of the assumptions that underlie the actual projections that they make. The impact on the city general fund is about $900,000. So those three items add to the base budget, right off the bat. Some of the non-level items that we are putting in, in the budget to help shore up salvage to the community, we are purchasing two fire engines, but, and that's approximately $1.3 million. The good news with that is that, you know, these new engines are being replaced from our set aside, monies that we've set aside in the vehicle fund to replace two old engines. When we bought those engines, usually our practice is we buy a vehicle, we depreciate them, and we set aside money every year. And with fire engines, over 20 years, we set aside enough money that we can go out and pay for it without burdening the current year budget. So the $1.3 million that's not come out of the current year budget, it comes out of money that we've set aside over the years in our vehicle funds to be able to replace this without, again, attaching it to the current year budget. But the other one, the police systems, the CAD RMS system project, we are adding approximately $400,000 to replace the police record management system. The one that's been there is very old, and I've been held to get a, I want to say by duct tapes and all, and maintaining, that is quite expensive, so it's time to go out and replace them. And also, we're beginning to pay the first, the initial parts of the public safety backbone system across the county. Our initial expense for next fiscal year 14-15 is approximately $80,000. But that cost will grow, and it's estimated that it probably will be about $3 to $5 million with all is said and done. But the thing there is that we are looking to participate in a bond financing with the rest of the cities in the county, and share in the debt service for those bonds to make this happen. And by doing so, our cash flow will be manageable. We don't have to put up the money, all of it, at one time. All we have to do is share in the debt service and budget annually for our portion of it. In addition to those, some of the restoration that we've done, it's bringing back some positions that we purposefully defunded in the past few years in critical areas. The first one that we did, a part of which we did in the current fiscal year, but we'll see the full impact of a whole year once the next budget kicks in, is we are providing some support, office support at the senior center to keep it functional. Within the fire department, we are also bringing back a fire captain. We are refunding it, we said what refunding. We defunded them in the past and held them vacant, but at this time, we are refunding them because the need is there. And we're also providing the fire department with some office support. Some of the, they need that office support to process paperwork and also to apply for grants, so that's an essential service that is needed within the department. Within the current fiscal year, we also refunded a senior community service officer within the police department. Some of the ones we refunded in reviewing the proposed budget also include, within the police department, we're adding two police officers and one police captain. I just said add, we're not adding them, we're basically refunding them. These were positions that were on the books before, but we defunded it, we didn't allocate money to them, but now we're saying that we need to allocate money to these positions, and we'll bring the police department to a level where they can effectively cover all the areas of the city. Also, within the community development department, we are refunding a planner position and actually defunding principal office assistant, which reduces the ultimate impact of that refunded planner position on the budget. And that's necessary because of all the development that is now being, that the economy is improving, and there's a lot more development going on, and we do need that planner position to handle the workload. Same is the construction inspector within the public works department. A lot of construction going on, and we do need that construction inspector position to help with the workload. In that case, we are deleting, actually deleting a part-time construction inspector and make, you know, making the, or adding a new full-time construction inspector. We do also have other impacts, non-level impacts, like operational factors, certain mandates that are being added in the budget. And we'll go through some of the numbers in a minute here, but some of the mandates, like animal control services that we don't have any control over, or crossing guard, fingerprint, annual renewal dues, and, and things like that that are included in this budget. By the numbers, just, this slide sort of tells the entire story. If you look at the first column there, by categories, are the budget numbers for the current fiscal year. And the grand total is approximately $93.7 million. What we're proposing in the budget, it's the second column, and it totals approximately 100.9, and so that's where our budget stands. The bulk of it, of course, is some of the positions that we are restoring in the budget, and also the fact that we're doing away with follow, and also the impact of PERS and all of that is added in those numbers. So at the end of the day, you know, year over year, we do have some increase, approximately $7.25 million in the budget. And on just a one-year look at our budget here again, you know, just the numbers cast in a different way, we are looking at projected fund balance. As I pointed out, it's zero, because even if we save money or declare revenue's coming much more than we budgeted in the current fiscal year, or we save on the expenditure side, we look, we look to replenish all the one-time sources before we can declare any kind of surplus that we carry over, you know, to the, to the year. So effectively, it's a zero beginning balance. Our total resources that's available to cover, fund the budget is approximately $92.9 million. And that number is a combination of the slide that I showed you earlier, eighty, if I can go back a little here, excuse me. It's a combination of the eighty-nine point, the ones in green here, I don't know if you can see it, eighty-nine point seven five five million dollars plus a million eight in gas tax, operational gas tax, and $675,000 in self-supporting recreation fees collected across the city. Those three numbers add up to that ninety-two point, if I can go back to the slide we were looking at, the ninety-two point nine three million dollars as available resources to fund the budget. To the left of that is a base budget of $97.95. Um, uh, to the left of that is our base budget of 97.4. We do have operational factors, uh, uh, approximately 55,000 dollars. Uh, those are to buy some small items, um, for our software and, and uh, some maintenance uh, uh, items. And um, the supplemental operation of about 1.9 million dollars, that accounts for some of those positions that we're refunding. And um, some of, and um, also some of the mandates, um, uh, approximately 400,000 of that are mandates, that we don't have any control over that we have to do. Uh, we are also supporting the street lighting, uh, district to the tune of 332,000 dollars. Uh, our C D B G has an impact, uh, on general fund is about 300,000 dollars, and um, we do have that uh, 900,000 dollars uh, um, increases from PERS, which again, uh, totals our budget to that 100.928 million dollars. And uh, when all is said and done, revenue minus expenditures, it's a negative 7.9. Again, consistent with our plan, you know, we, we know this is the way that it will shake out in our three-year plan, and um, um, so, we do have um, the one-time resources to um, put in place to uh, uh, balance the budget. Um, and we're drawing down from um, the PERS reserve that we've set aside, and this will essentially is the last of it, uh, that's available. Uh, we will have more available to the extent that we did not, we don't use the one that is for the current fiscal year. Um, uh, we're also taking 2 million dollars uh, from um, development agreement fee fund, uh, and 1.5 from our self-insurance fund, and uh, uh, 1.5 from workers' comp fund. And I, I can't say, you know, that even with these withdrawals, we still have uh, good balances in those fund, it doesn't jeopardize integrity of those funds. Um, uh, you know, so, uh, the, the other thing to point out is that um, we put these things in place to balance the budget, to the extent that we have more revenue as the year goes by, you know, we would take less. Uh, to the extent that when we close out the books, uh, all of that 100.9 million dollars, we don't spend all of it, we will take less of that. And I fully expect that out of that 100.9 million dollar budget, we have to, we have to prepare a full uh, uh, gross budget, but I don't anticipate that uh, we will spend all of it. For, for starters, some of the positions that we're refunding will probably take a couple of months or so to fill those positions, and um, uh, the longer they remain vacant, the more that we can save. So, um, there's usually maybe 2 to 3% uh, savings in, in that number. But uh, given what it is, you know, if we use those one-time um, uh, monies, um, as we planned to do, uh, from our three-year financial plan, uh, we'll have a balanced budget and, and um, begin the fiscal year um, as planned. Um, just some summary remarks, you know, um, yeah, just to summarize, you know, all of these have an impact, we eliminate the FLO, uh, it adds to it. Um, we also include the full impact of all the negotiated uh, salary adjustments. Uh, we'll attempt to restore service capacity, and uh, we're drawing down approximately uh, 8 million dollars, which is consistent with the three-year plan, with a projected balance of uh, just over, uh, approximately 50. Outlook for revenue, um, the economic recovery is underway, but it's very slow, but the good news is going in the right direction, and hopefully stays um, in that trajectory. Um, we have um, continued recovery growth in sales tax, property tax, and hotel tax. Uh, we are, you know, very hopeful with regards to hotel tax. Um, it is est- estimated that um, yeah, the Great Wolf will yield uh, anywhere from 5 to 7 million dollars alone in um, transient occupancy tax. Um, so, uh, we do have that underway, and some of the major projects that are underway. Uh, we will continue to uh, explore, you know, revenue growth opportunities, particularly um, on Harbor Boulevard, so. Um, the other issues, uh, sort of looking ahead, is that we are fully also expecting that besides the 900,000 dollars in fiscal year 2014, 15, in 2015, 16, there probably will be close to a million dollars uh, additional impact from PERS that we have to deal with, accommodating the budget then. Um, and with that, um, I can um, answer any questions uh, with respect to this part of the budget.
Any questions for staff?
I just have one question, as far as the reserve, Kingsley, how much more do we have in reserve? Because we keep drawing down it, so just wanted to know how much more.
Well, the true reserve we have is the um, uh, uh, post reserve, which uh, drawing down to 3 million dollars is the last piece of it. Um, the other funds that we have, you know, like the um, uh, insurance fund, workers' company insurance, or the uh, self-insurance fund, uh, those are not necessarily true reserves, but we do have enough money in those funds where we can um, uh, we accumulate money because we're self-insured. And um, every year, we manage those funds that we pay interest into those funds. So we can go back for, look back five years and just take the interest that we paid to those funds to ref, to the extent that are, uh, they are general fund portions to uh, bring that as one-time sources. Um, so, we don't look at those as reserves, we look at those as um, you know, as uh, available. We look at them on a year-to-year basis based on actual studies and what's available that we can use uh, to balance um, our budget. Um, again, like I said, the PERS reserve is the true reserve that we have. To the extent we allocate it every year, if we don't use it, we bring it back and carry your, carry, carry them over to the next uh, year.
And based on our discussion, we have, we have been doing that, correct?
Yeah, we have been doing that, and um, it's, it has worked, um, and it's part of the strategy that we adopted um, um, during the recession, to um, look at three years and knowing that it would take time for revenues to catch up uh, with our expenditures, and um, um, it, it's part of the plan. Um, beyond next year, like I said, this fall, we need to sit down, staff, and uh, you know, come up with a new financial plan, a new, a new three-year financial plan, and look at what we're anticipating uh, over the next three years, both on the revenue side and also on the expenditure side, and, and um, manage it accordingly.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, are you, are you confident that we're, we're gonna get back to balanced budget at the end of this three-year plan, and that looking forward, we're not gonna have to contemplate any future deficit spending like we did?
Yeah, I am, um, let's put it this way, I'm very encouraged about the prospects and um, that we have, in terms of some of the new projects that are going in place, and the revenues that are being projected, even on a conservative basis, uh, how much those will add to the um, city uh, um, revenue coffers. On the expenditure side, we, you know, as I said, we have to stay restrained, you know, uh, expenditure growth, uh, we have to actively, proactively manage, you know, so that um, you know, it can stay in line with uh, revenue when we get there. We cannot spend um, uh, um, revenues we don't have yet. We have to wait till, um, uh, we can't count our, our chicken until they hatch, so to speak. So, looking ahead, you know, to answer your question, yeah, I'm, I'm encouraged, you know, um, you know, based on projections, I cannot predict what happens, you know, in the next three years, but I do feel comfortable that at least we have a lot of stuff in the pipeline that can um, cover some of the uh, expenditures, so long as we don't let it grow too much.
Several of those you had mentioned was um, Great Wolf, Brokers' Triangle, also Walmart. Are there any sort of expected revenues from those within this next 2014, 15 budget? Or is that sort of?
Uh, Walmart, um, is one that could, um, you know, they've indicated we'll open um, this summer, so we should see that impact. And um, you know, the way we project, I've not included uh, much of that in the budget. I like to be pleasantly surprised, you know, that's what we discussed, that we wanna be pleasantly surprised when those revenues materialize.
Revenues from those projects, I know that, like, water park won't be done until end of next year, so that would be kind of, from any kind of ongoing revenue generating standpoint, it would be a 2016 calendar year event and beyond, but are there any permit fees, are there any other stuff like that?
Yeah.
With either that or Brokers' Triangle that are, that are baked into our expectations for revenues within the next year?
No, I, you know, the way we projected our revenue, we've not baked in any of that. Uh, whether it's Walmart or the Great Wolf or um, the Brokers' Triangle, they are not part of this projections. Uh, we try not to do that, you know, but we, there's also um, some small revenues that will come in, um, whether it's permit fees, or even as uh, they add constructions that are, um, you know, at some point, there's construction in progress that's being recorded at the county, so we'll see a little bit of bump uh, on the property tax. But we've not included any of that in the projections here.
Any other questions? Turning down at this time, we'll open up the uh...
Wait, you got, you have a few more to go through?
Yeah.
There's a couple more, like the water budget, so just a couple more before we open the public hearing.
Where's the water? I don't see that.
Water is coming.
You're hiding it well.
Just a couple more slides, and then we can go.
Just a couple more slides, just to go through them, because they're all part of the um, one resolution that you're going to adopt.
You know, when George was the uh, city manager, he went all the time to show us everything, 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 and then he was, went back for another three hours to show us how he was gonna solve it all. George is not here anymore.
Just a couple more slides, right, Kingsley?
Just a couple of, a few more, a few more slides, a few more slides, you know, we want just to highlight some of our grants, we have a, a lot of grants, um, that, that we run, and uh, it's all part of the um, it's part of the resolution that you're going to adopt. It's Car Home and, you know, C D B G home grant, uh, Post and all, all of that. But in summary, you know, we just lump them all together and present them as grant funds. Uh, we are anticipating approximately 7.7 million dollar receipts in all of our grants. Um, with the beginning balance, of course, um, of 300,000 dollars, and I, I'm not sure which ones have that balance, but this is all consolidated presentation here. Uh, there's operational grants, there's also capital grants that are included in that. Um, we have total appropriations of approximately 8 million dollars with a balance of uh, a small balance left of all of our grants. And grants are such that we don't spend money until we receive it. So, uh, you're adopting this budget, but based on um, uh, um, when we get the money, that's when we spend it. Next is the water supply. Uh, we do have a balanced budget for water, um, and uh, the water department is continuing to implement uh, the financial plan and the master plan, and, and also continuing to do all the capital replacement projects for which, uh, you know, we raised our rates and also issue bonds for. Um, they could want to continue to uh, implement energy conservation programs for water production, and uh, uh, also comply with all the new mandates, whether it's water quality, uh, AQMD, uh, NP, DES, permits, and all of that good stuff. Uh, in numbers, our water fund is uh, doing well. Um, we have a beginning balance of approximately 4.3 million dollars that we're projecting to receive in um, you know, revenue fee for service of approximately 3, 34.8 million dollars. Uh, operations and maintenance takes up about 9.9 million dollars of that. Uh, purchased water, 14.469 million dollars uh, was allocated to that. Um, uh, compared to previous year, maybe uh, still within a reasonable band. Uh, debt services approximately 2.6 million dollars. We do have a capital replacement program, uh, um, and capital improvement, uh, um, program, the two of them is about 4.3 million dollars allocated to that. And there's also the street repair charge, which is the um, general fund surcharge to the water fund for all the street damage and uh, to, to help fund um, our overlay and uh, uh, street uh, work. And that leaves a, a balance of 6.24 million dollars. So we do have some funds in there to continue to do the uh, capital work as um, our capacity can allow. And uh, at this time, we're not looking to issue the second part, part of the bond fund that's approved for uh, the water uh, uh, program. Um, I, you know, to the extent that we can fund, we can fund um, uh, all the capital improvements using revenue generated um, this way, we'll continue to do that, um, and postpone the issuance of bonds to fund um, the um, capital improvements. We also have the special assessments fund. Uh, we do have the street lighting, the parking district, main street, uh, the tourism improvement district, and park maintenance assessment district. And um, you know, again, we've consolidated all of that. Um, uh, beginning balance of 164, um, 2014, 15, total assessments uh, from all of them of 4.9, uh, 7 million dollars in um, operation and maintenance of 4.8, with a balance of 4, 149. Uh, but this kind of bellies um, the problem in some of the individual uh, um, special assessments, particularly um, the street lighting, that doesn't fund uh, uh, all of its cost. And as I, you know, showed you in the um, uh, general fund uh, presentation, there's uh, over 300,000 dollars that is being um, uh, used by um, the general fund is subsidizing that to the tune of uh, 300, over 300,000 dollars. But we present it in this format because you have to adopt uh, the appropriation uh, um, for all of it. And that's the end of it for this portion. Um, we do have one appropriation limit, again, the GAN initiative on this side. Um, and um, if I can go through uh, that quickly, again, it's um, the appropriation limit for...
Let's take a break, let's take five minutes.
Alright.
Way through the budget. Mr. Baird?
Huh?
Where'd that come from?
Uh, yeah.
Nobody should have heard it. You wanna do some more of this?
I have a few more, Mr. Mayor.
You laugh, this used to take 14 hours, this guy's a real improvement.
Well, um, item 72 appropriation, appropriations limit. Um, uh, this again is pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution, as amended by Proposition 4. The annual spending limit is based on the amount of appropriation in fiscal '78, '79, which is the best year. And subsequent year spending limits are calculated by adjusting the best year number by annual population growth and a cost of living factor. These factors are provided by the State Department of Finance. Again, for the growth factor, uh, cost of living growth factor, it's a negative 0.23% for fiscal year uh, 14, 15. Uh, and that uh, represents um, the change in California per capita personal income. The county population growth is 0.93%. So you multiply those number, every year, we go from the best year, 1978, and keep multiplying that number until you get to the um, the current fiscal year and the projected fiscal year coming up. So, based on these factors, um, and all that are increases over the years, the appropriation limit, it's calculated is about 122 million dollars. That's the, the limit, you can appropriate monies up to those limits, to the extent that we have revenues to cover them, and, and these are considered proceeds of uh, tax. Uh, but for the city, as we pointed out in the calculations there, there are certain deductions that you have to make. If you have any um, outstanding debt, um, uh, all the water fund balances, you know, we have to take that out. We take out um, uh, grant balances, all the beginning balances that we showed here, we take all of those out. We take out um, non-proceeds of tax revenue, all the non-proceeds of tax. We take out non-proceeds of tax revenue, all the non-proceeds of tax that comes into general fund, we take that out and that's about $76 million. And then we take out what we call city infrastructure depreciation that is unfunded. We take that out of this number. And the additional thing we take out is that we look at our funded, you know, purse unfunded liability, you know, that's been in the news, we take all of that out. When we take all of that out of this number, our general fund number really that is subject to that appropriation becomes zero because it's negative. And to the extent that we have revenues, we can appropriate up to the $122 million. That's the entire room that the council has to appropriate in this case. So we have a very long way to go before we hit the appropriations limit. And that is the appropriations limit presentation. A3, if I can move on, is the unresolved fund balance for future appropriations. And this resolution is only, is to make any unresolved fund balances available for future appropriations. Essentially, once we go through to make the appropriate reservations for encumbrances or reappropriations that are necessary to close out the fiscal year for any amounts left in the funds, will then become available for use in the following year. For basic fund, it is the basis for projecting ending fund balance, which at this point, as I explained before, is zero. If we have any balance, we're just going to put it back to those special funds from which we've drawn one-time fund to balance the budget. I don't know if this is showing. The other one, 7A4, is reappropriation and what this does is set aside and carry over monies to cover the current fiscal year and prior fiscal year encumbrances and commitments from purchase orders, all projects that are underway and those that may be ongoing or completed after the fiscal year ends. So essentially, when we close the books, if there's any contracts that are ongoing that are budgeted in current fiscal year or prior fiscal year, we set aside those monies so we can satisfy those contracts as they go forward. And I believe that's, the other ones we have. We have reviewed the housing budget, but again, you have to adopt the housing budget as part of the general budget adoption on the city side. And we do have a list of all the conferences and...
Training sessions.
Yeah, conferences and training sessions for city employees across the board. That is also part of that action item that we're asking for you to adopt. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for this gentleman? Hearing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing on 7A, which includes 7A1 all the way through 7A6. Hold it three minutes now, guys.
I only have three quick questions. The first one is, with the new budget, are City Hall offices going to be open now on every Friday?
Yes, we've gone back to it.
Good, okay.
Every other Friday. We always were every other Friday. Not, we had, and then we added two, two days, so the fifth Friday we got open on. So now it's going back to every other Friday.
Great, okay. And we're buying two new fire trucks. The other ones are 20 years old. Are we going to gain anything by selling them to someone?
We sell them to probably Mexico and they don't pay a lot of pesos for those trucks.
Okay. And finally, a bond issue was approved for $45 million.
Forty-two.
Forty-five million, forty-two of which is going to be part of the cost of building the new water park. But I understood it was 45 and I'm wondering about that other $3 million. What use was that put to?
Forty-seven.
Okay.
Well, we actually haven't sold the bonds yet, so we won't do that.
Sorry, you're a long ways, we're a long ways from that.
When the hotel opens is when we sell the bonds.
That's probably a 2016 event.
Yeah, probably won't any of us be here anyway.
And it's a successor agency event, not a city event, so it's not pertinent to the city budget.
I just have some questions. I was at 11 o'clock at the commission meeting and one of the council commissioners going, can we do something with our webpage? I look around our cities that have updated and it's, I guess from complaint from the commissioner, one of your colleagues, I kind of look at it and say, maybe there's consideration to give it a little punch in the forward because you have a lot of visitors who are coming to your Garden Grove and they probably want to make it real simple if they have information that they can get to, to promote tourism, that would be of interest to you. The next question is, having talked to the bike coordinator of Arizona today...
Let's stick to the budget now, that's what it's about.
I am, I'm getting to the point. So I, the point is, we need a grant consideration, a grant writer that we can hire because everything they do in there is federally funded. I mean, everything and then the private donations. So when I said bike to you on the lemur, it was just that referencing where I got the information, is that if we, I know we're, I respect, we talked to Bill and I appreciate it, but maybe we should look a little bit broader now and see if we can't get some professional contract people who can really hone down on these dollars that can increase our dollar potential for what we're trying to do in the community. And the other question is, lastly, I've asked this question, I haven't got a response from the city. Is there any consideration for maintenance of sidewalk paint? Currently, I've wrote that on Facebook page, Chapman and Gilbert, which is the eighth deadliest intersection in Orange County. I don't know what Walmart's going to do to it further. But over at the school at Chapman and Magnolia, part of it's missing, there's no paint. So my question is, is there consideration to the safety of the citizens, pedestrians, and account for the paint, which is part of Caltrans and the vehicle code standard? That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Now's the time. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. I would certainly, anybody want to discuss it or anything you want to change? Entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move it and just with a quick bit of commentary, in part just to kind of put some of this in plain English for anybody who's still awake at this point. And in part to compliment staff on getting here from where we came from and then just to kind of caution where I think we're at. I would compliment our staff and some very intelligent minds on rewinding about five years back in recognition of a downturn forthcoming and wanting to get out ahead of that downturn and doing the belt tightening that was necessary at the time. But furthermore, to compliment them on having compassion for the organizational culture that we have here within the city and its various departments and not being overkill. We saw a lot of other cities just do major layoffs and that kind of thing. And I think that was part of our, just good communication amongst the departments and the unions and whatnot to come together and say, let's all collaboratively tighten our belts together and get through this thing together, which I think is what we did. And so we did survive this well and part of that included this, this sort of three-year plan that dipped into some deficit spending to make it through and exchange for all of the things that our employee associations agreed to give into at the time and to participate in that. So it was, it was an excellent collaborative effort among all the departments to get here. And the cautionary measure is just, here we are at the end of that three-year plan, so this is the last year. I presume that we're contemplating dipping in any kind of deficit spending. I would certainly hope that going forward, in next year's budget, there wouldn't be any of that and we would find other ways to address it if so. And also just caution that, you know, we've, we've got a lot of exciting things on the horizon coming up in the city, but caution that we don't get out over our skis ahead of ourselves in terms of increasing spending before those revenues actually come in, so...
Okay.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Okay. We have a motion. Anybody else like to say anything? We entertain a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I just like to say that it's, we planned very, very well to get through this recession, but boy, we have had some good luck too. And if you saw those numbers on that TOT, tenant occupancy tax, they went down one year, but boy, they steadily went up every year since then. And the point is that we've been lucky because people decided to come to Disneyland instead of going to Hawaii or the Caribbean. They spent, saved a few dollars and came here. And that really helped us out a lot because the tendency itself, there were few empties in the hotel rooms and things like that. So we've been extremely lucky. Garden Grove's been, we had, we built the hotels at the right time and we certainly used them at the right time. So it's been very, very good. And we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Pham?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Okay, we have no commission or committee matters. Let's go to items for consideration.
A is approval of renewing our Measure M seven-year capital improvement program. And Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. In 2006, the voters of Orange County approved the renewal of a local transportation funding ordinance called Measure M. Each year, the city of Garden Grove receives about $2.5 million as a minimum from Measure M program. These funds are used to maintain or improve our city streets. As a requirement to receive Measure M funding, council is being asked to approve our seven-year CIP and to certify our maintenance of effort reporting. Those documents are attached to your staff report. Should the council decide to approve the documents, city will continue to receive the Measure Two, Measure M2 funding and improve the city streets. This concludes staff report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Pham?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Okay, let's go to 9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B is an ordinance establishing the paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 14-15. And Mr. Okariki is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, in June 1974, over 60% of the Garden Grove voters approved the paramedic tax override to help fund the ongoing cost of emergency medical care service, the paramedic services to the community. In order to maintain and continue to pay for the paramedic emergency medical care services, it is necessary to continue to generate revenue through the use of tax override on the taxable properties within the city of Garden Grove. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the attached ordinance authorizing a property tax override of seven cents per $100 of full value specifically for the 2014-2015 fiscal year to fund the paramedic program. Total revenue anticipated as a result, it's approximately $8.3 million that will be used to maintain and pay for the emergency medical care services. With this, staff is recommending that the city council conduct the first reading and introduce the ordinance establishing the paramedic tax override for fiscal year 2014-15 at seven cents per $100 of full value. And that concludes my report and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
We're going to read the title of the ordinance.
That's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Has there been any increase in that?
No. No addition.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
We have to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Pham?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Broadwater.
Yes. Okay, let's go to 10.
Mr. Mayor, 10A is the reading of, the second reading of ordinance number 2841, ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove approving a zone change amendment number A17213 in conjunction with the proposed annexation of the property commonly referred to as Carmel-Lampson Island to the city of Garden Grove and to prezone the property as R3 multifamily residential.
I was not expecting Dave to come down here tonight. Did we do anything wrong?
No, Mr. Mayor. When this item came up a few years back and everything that Mayor Schuber mentioned about Lafco wanting to consolidate these properties, and Stanton certainly was cooperating with Lafco to do so, at the 11th hour, a phone call was made and pressure was put on Lafco not to approve it. When the city of Garden Grove became aware of that, we were very clear, I may have even had a conversation with the mayor, certainly I had a conversation with the city manager saying, look, we're not involved in this, we support the annexation in the Stanton, we're not involved in this at all. And so we were very clear about that. But as that annexation process didn't go forward and then the property owner approached the city of Garden Grove and had the support of Lafco to do so, you know, we didn't see any reason why we wouldn't support it. And I can't say the exact terms, but again, in having conversations with the city manager after the disappointment or the frustration of that process, it's my understanding that Stanton said, look, if this is what the property owner wants to do, yes, we're disappointed, we're frustrated that at the 11th hour this all happened, but if that's the way they're going to go, then so be it. So, no, we did not inject ourselves at all into the process. We stayed as far away as we could, but once the application came forward to Lafco, there seemed to be support for that and there was no reason for us not to go forward with it.
Well, it's my understanding that the property owner himself is the one that paid the $15,000 fee at Lafco.
Yes, they've paid a large fee to Lafco, they paid a fee to us up to this point. They certainly have made a financial commitment to see this process through.
Any, any, any statements from councilor?
I'll make a statement. I think it's kind of interesting, we weren't, each city competing for that property, in essence, it's on the border. And it's kind of interesting, the whole, how it all came about. Lafco seems to be the primary force, but I think there's an element of self-determination here by the property owner wanting to be the city of Garden Grove. I hadn't heard any disparaging remarks about the city of Stanton on our behalf. I consider it a sister city as well, so I, if this is where it ended up, I'm happy to have them as a part of the city, but I'm just as happy if they had chosen to go with Stanton as well. So I don't see any of this competing and so I'm just surprised to see that Dave come here and make these comments, but I just want to, I think this is going forward with the city of Garden Grove, want to welcome this, these people into our city. I think they've made an excellent choice.
Yeah, it really seems to be at a late point. And Dave, he didn't want to, he doesn't really want to annex it, he doesn't want us to annex it. And then it goes back to the county. And the whole thing's a mess. If I got, we're on 10A, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I will be abstaining from this second reading because I wasn't here for the first reading.
Oh boy, what a sneaky way to get out of this.
It wasn't. I was at Emily's graduation.
I'm supportive, I'd like to make just a quick comment. Just a clarification that this wasn't something that we proactively pursued. It's not like we went out and approached them or like to Councilman Beard's point, this wasn't a competitive thing from our standpoint. This is something we were approached about, the property owners that they wanted to come to us. I tend to be supportive of property rights and people's, you know, desire to run their properties how they see fit. And they've always associated by address with Garden Grove and it would have been unnatural for them to have to, you know, educate their, re-educate their tenants to have to associate with a different city address going forward. So this was their choice and we kind of said, we don't want to get in the middle of the drama of it, but if you can go produce kind of a Lafco support and get Stanton to drop it, which is what happened, and then they came back to us. And the other stipulation we said is make this sort of cost neutral to us, don't make us have to do any kind of infrastructure spending to change anything. So they checked off all the bullets on the list that we said and I'm comfortable where we're at and going forward with it. No offense to Stanton whatsoever.
Every once in a while, somebody gets mad at Garden Grove and wants to, to be annexed by some other city, you know, I've always taken the position that go ahead, you have to pay the, your share of the money we've borrowed over the years and that sort of kills the issue. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pham?
Yes.
And Mayor Broadwater?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen is abstaining.
Let's go to matters from the mayor and city council members. Chris Baird?
Just a couple items. I know it's late. I just want to reiterate what we passed the proclamation tonight, that July is, what, Parks, Parks and Recreation Month? And with that, we very, we're very well know that it's the start of summer, everything's being, going to be kicking off, and the fun and the sun and all the activities. I encourage citizens to look at our webpage to see what's coming up, especially with Parks and Recreation. There's a whole lot of good things coming up, and I think of concerts in the park, I think of the Fourth of July, which I want to wish a happy Fourth of July to everyone. Our next council meeting will be, be after that, so have a safe Fourth of July. Remember, the illegal fireworks are illegal, a thousand-dollar fine, and that will happen if you're caught. So I just want to wish everyone a happy summer, look forward to what's coming ahead. And I do want to commend staff for the budget. I know it was long and detailed, but it was important, and a lot of work was put into it, and I think we're moving in the right direction as a city. It's very encouraging, cautiously optimistic is what I hear, but we're headed towards that, the light at the end of the tunnel, the great recession. We're making our way out of it, and we're doing a fine job as a city, and it's, it's great that we're doing that, and it's great that we planned ahead in doing that, and I look forward to planning further ahead to see even more prosperity in the years to come with the city. That's it. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, staff, for carefully planning the budget and cleverly tying in the hotel taxes, the revenue, and all of the issues in the city, including our staff, staffing of the city and the service in the city. They've done a wonderful job, all of you as a team. We couldn't ask for a better team. Also, I wanted to say that we're heading towards summer, there's a lot of activities in the city. I think a lot of people are not aware of activities, so maybe if we could ask the rec department to send out some flyers in the different languages, Spanish, Vietnamese, Korean, English, so that everyone are aware of the fun that we can have for the young people in Garden Grove, like The Voice, like the summer concerts, like the different parks that we have now open. We have two new facilities with new activities in them. One is Atlantis Park, we now have those spouting water that Steve Jones kids really like. And then we have the New Basin, that's new, so I think we should let everyone know, we have a lot of different recreational in Garden Grove, and please don't forget to buy in Garden Grove this upcoming Fourth of July. And if you buy fireworks, be safe and do not buy illegal fireworks, just a reminder, the illegal fireworks carry a very heavy penalty to them, they're up in the thousands, so watch your children and advise others not to do illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Mr. Pham?
Well, first of all, I'll say thank you, Kingsley, for seeing me through the issues tonight, really appreciate that, and happy Fourth, everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Nothing to add, go ahead.
Nothing to add. Well, I really don't have a lot to add. I think, I think the budget was done well, and I think you and your department, Kingsley, can take a bow on that, you certainly did fine, and it, and it come together well, and I'm ecstatic about it, so it's great. There is a splash pad for the kids at the park, what's?
Atlantis Park.
Atlantis Park, correct. And it is fun place for the kids in the summer, it's great. We were taking some films over there for the mayor's annual speech, and I had my grandchildren with me, and nobody could figure out how to turn on that splash pad. My grandson, four years old, says, I'll show you. He, he did it. So it'd be done. We have an obituary tonight, and we're going to read it, and we're going to close in the name of Richard James Hillman. He was born in nineteen thirty-two and passed away in two thousand and fourteen. Richard J. Hillman of Garden Grove passed away at home on June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, with his family by his side. Richard, a veteran of the Korean War, survived by his beloved wife Grace, as well as his children and grandchildren. A vigil will be held on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, from four P.M. to eight P.M. at the Diamond and Shannon Mortuary Chapel. A funeral mass will be held in Richard's honor at Saint Clement Catholic Church on Friday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, at ten A.M., with a gray side service immediately following at the Good Shepherd Cemetery. Arrangements under the direction of Diamond and Shannon Mortuary, Garden Grove, California, Well, our hearts go out to the family, he was a big member in the Elks Club, and he'll be missed, I'm sure. And with his name, we close, he closes. Say it again?
Azteca?
Oh, Azteca, somebody, I don't really consider Azteca dying, I don't know how that works out, you know?
George Slackett.
George Slackett, did he pass away?
Yeah, he did.
Nobody gave anything on him.
Yeah, he did.
Well, we're closing in the name of George Slackett and Richard James Hillman tonight, and we'll check into the death of the Azteca. I got a feeling if they've closed down, I think he's sold it out to somebody else.
If it was sold, business was sold, JJ still owns the property.
Yeah, see, they haven't quite, yeah, they're just getting a little transfusion, so, okay. And with all of that, we'll close. I think we'll be back together again on July the eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty P.M. in the community center.